Prior to the budget meeting that we will be having as part of our regular meeting on September the 2nd. So this is in preparation for our first meeting in September. And I've put on here the work session to start discussing the budget, but I think we'll go second around. So we'll start with our agenda and then we'll move into what probably is a little more robust discussion from a budget standpoint. See where we can land. Well, no, I'm all over here and Alderman Skidder is here. And Alderman Brooks is driving in from, he was passing Lewisville about 20 minutes ago. He should be here shortly.
He feels quite right.
Yeah, he's just a little bit off. Your Baptist run there. Okay, so let's go ahead and drop over to the agenda. And so we've got a couple of sets of minutes. Ms. Harden, you've passed them on to Mr. Huskerson and everybody's happy with them?
Yes, ma'am.
Can we get consent for that one?
Yes, sir.
All right. And so from Mayor's comments, I believe we've got some introductions that we'll be doing. And then, and then just in terms of talking about it, today we know we've got holiday on Monday. So Labor Day we'll be, we'll be off. And then we'll have full pickup, where's Chris? We've got full city pickup, I believe, on Tuesday for our, for our trash schedule. And then something else that I had written down. Oh, I was going to mention tonight's our first S H S home game. So we've got, we've got a new football field and some new lights out there. So I think it'll be a nice evening and it looks like it's going to be a beautiful football night.
A new scoreboard?
Sir?
A new scoreboard?
A new scoreboard, that's right. We've got all kinds of things that we can go enjoy. And I don't know.
Yeah.
New coach. Do we have a new coach?
New coach. New coach.
Okay. We got a new everything then, don't we? No wonder we got.
New athletic director.
Well, I knew about the new athletic director. Okay, so anyway, it should be an exciting first football evening for Starble. So looking forward to walking to the game and enjoying the, enjoying the night. And yeah, besides that, okay. So introductions, we'll add those, Ms. Harden, to the, to the list just for reference. And then we've got public hearings. So we've got a 211911 for property located at 511 Whitfield, which obviously is a public hearing. And we'll be dealing with that when that comes around to us. So nothing to do as it relates to that. The second public hearing on the tax mileage and the budget. And then the resolution adopting the budget, assuming we can reach a conclusion and get some idea of where we might be going today. Good morning, Vice Mayor.
Good morning, Mayor.
We will see if we can do that. If not, we'll end up with a special call because between the 2nd and the 15th, we need to have it done by the 15th. So it is my hope that we find ourselves in a place where we can have an agreement for what we plan to do. So under Mayor's business, we have, this is, this is pro forma. Chris Taylor's family, this is not set yet, but the, but the board has got to approve the change. So we've got Calico Court, which is in Camden Green Phase 2. And the developer has agreed to change the name of Calico Court to Chris Taylor Court. And so we need to do that formally so that when the time comes, they haven't got, they haven't got temporary certificates of occupancy. They have got no occupancy out there yet. So no one's address is going to be changed. They wouldn't have to change, you know, their stationery or their, you know, not that anybody writes letters anymore. In a moment, Vice Mayor. No one will have to make those changes. So this seems like a really good time to do that. And then at the appropriate time, we will have a ceremony of some kind and the family will come in. Vice Mayor?
Yes, just want to respectfully inform you, just for housekeeping matter. I think the correct name of that sub-business is Clark Grove 2. You can check your planning.
Did I say Camden Green?
You did.
Yeah, they started out.
It's also on the agenda as well.
Yes, okay. Well, you're absolutely right.
Post office.
You're absolutely right. We will, we will fix that to Clark Grove Phase 2. Thank you.
Sure.
Appreciate it.
Sure.
I wonder why they changed the name on this, on the side. Anyway, so I would like, that should be an easy consent if we make that change, Ms. Harden. Make that corrected. Okay, consent for that one?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. Then consideration of authorizing the liens. This is the liens for the places that we have mowed in accordance with the board's action with the last board meeting. So consent for that one?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. And we have, these are the, pretty much the things that we have to do every year per the legislation associated with 2% money, which at our last, last four years was House Bill 1547. Each one of them has to submit to us a 2% budget for the coming year, which they have each one done. Should be in your packet. And just as a reminder to everyone, this next year, this next legislative year is going to be our 2% request. And so I've got it on the agenda for October, I believe, for us to come forward and put a resolution together so that we'll be ready to go to the legislature for that 2% funding. That's just a, just an oh, by the way. So any reason not to put those on consent?
Consent.
Okay, all right. I'll let them know so that it's not necessary for them to show up unless they just would like to be there in case. Then we have a resolution. This is the water and sewer revenue bonds. As you know, we, we put that out. It's been a proper 45 days, I believe. So this is the opportunity for us to authorize the issuance of the bonds. We had authorized, we did the authorization and this will be the authorization for the issuance.
It closes the protest period and we can authorize the issuance.
Consent for that one? Okay. Then we have acceptance of the grant, Mr. Lincoln. This is part of that runway extension with a 5% match, which I don't know how lucky we get that we have, that the airport's getting 5%. It'd be nice to have that all over. So anyway, acceptance of that, consent for that one?
Consent.
Okay. And then engineering, we have a task order two for not to exceed them out for Neil Schaefer. And this is for bridge. Cody, would you just kind of give an understanding of the bridge issue again? Because we're going to have to be dealing with those things.
Yes, ma'am. So we received some complaints that something looked wrong with the bridge back here in our big range in June. One of the head walls has effectively fallen off. And so could have repaired it, but my suspicion was that maybe the bridge needed some further work. We had Neil Schaefer do a bridge assessment and they let us know that you're in about the five to 10-year range for that bridge is, at the minimum, rated and not completely offline. And so what we're trying to do is get some preliminary engineering done so we know how much it's going to cost, what is the solution, and then to kind of budget for that in case there's not E R V R funding, which is what we hope. But if there's not, the bridge has to be replaced. And so if this is going to be a billion and a half dollars, we need to know so we can plan for it. So this is, this gets us about 30% of the plans, the survey, and then the hydraulic problem.
Okay, yes, ma'am.
And Cody, this, this is just step one in a fairly long process. If we had a million and a half dollars lying around, it still would take us a couple of years at least to get this done?
I would suspect we would have about nine months' worth of design and then the procurement process, which, you know, maybe you're breaking, maybe you're breaking ground a year and a half from now. And so it does take a while.
So when you mentioned that five to 10-year window, half of, half of that first five years is designed, procurement, and built.
Which bridge is this?
Oh, West Point Road, just north of Garrett Road.
The one that we.
Well, that entire intersection, as you know.
It's striking.
Yeah, that was going east on, yeah, east on Garrett Road, close to the entrance to the car dealership. That was part of it. Then we have issue on Pat Station Road, which is across 12, but same road extension. And it's, it's kind of like somebody put their thumb right there and kind of messed with everything, bridges included. And we also have, Cody, that area that's south of the Garrett Road, that bridge area there, the area that's eroding, we're looking at, we've looked at that too. Have we stabilized that one yet or is that?
Street department did that.
Okay, so it is stabilized now?
It is.
Okay, so that was another area that was a concern.
Is there another bridge in that area too or?
There's, there's two, there's two more further north. We've looked at those. They don't look as concerning. But I would say at large, we have multiple bridges that are not getting any better and we need to plan it for them. So this is probably the worst because of its condition and the number of vehicles on it per day. You know, it's got a really big reroute, about five miles. So it's probably tough probably, but there are others that are coming.
There's one on Reed Road.
There's one on Reed Road, yes, ma'am.
So we've got, you know, we've got older bridges and it's like all the rest of the things that we're dealing with, you know, where things are starting to age and we're just all, it's culminating kind of right in front of us. So dealing with all of that. Anyway, all of that to say that this is a necessary part of moving forward with this bridge.
Yes, ma'am.
Consent for that one?
Consent.
Okay. And then we have an indemnity agreement for some work that's being done on Gillespie Street. Mr. Lee, right there at Gillespie and Lafayette, is doing some side, side improvements by his house, but it's in the right of way. And so this is an agreement that Bert put together. Cody put it together with him. And so I think we're comfortable that this serves the purpose of keeping us out of the business of making those repairs if something goes wrong.
We are.
Okay, consent for that? All right, thank you. Then we have the claims docket and then we have the audits. So we have, can successfully, successfully report that our audits are back on track. And so that keeps us from being in any kind of jeopardy as it relates to bonded, bond ratings and TBA concerns and that sort of thing.
And we're going to get the state auditor.
Or the state auditor coming in and joining us, that's right. So I want to publicly thank Randy Scrivener from Lockton Ward Staffer for making the special effort to get us back on track. And also certainly Webb and Lisa and Alderman Sistrum for working, working through and making that audit happen.
Utilities.
And utilities, that's right. Connor and Edward in the Utilities Department, thank you. So anyway, it's a, it's a good thing and I want, I want to give them props where we can. So consent for that one?
Consent.
Okay. And then we have the engagement letter for next year's audit, which they had said will again be on time and be rolling here soon, right?
They've guaranteed a delivery of no later in June.
Okay.
And they are scheduled to come to our office October 27th and to utilities and River Fiat Office. So they'll jump on this one if they, they're hoping earlier in June.
Okay, good.
Just for time and perspective, because I love piki accounting things and not everybody knows this, but they'll come in and they'll start doing preliminary work. They won't get the information from PERS, which is a significant statement that goes into the, into the financial statements until February at the earliest. So they, they will have a gap there till February until they can get anything done. They will put everything together, wrap it up, and then it goes to reviews in-house.
In-house, yes.
And, and with the external reviews that have to happen before those are released. And so very early as they could anticipate doing it, if everything fell into place, would be late April, early May. And so a June 30 guarantee date is well within the 12 months that we have to have it in and is a huge step forward from where we've been post-COVID.
Okay. Again, that's a, that's a good thing. Glad to see we're on track because there are a lot of municipalities.
Well, that's a challenge, well.
There are a lot of municipalities that are not, so.
There are a lot that are similar.
Let's go stick around and take care of it.
I'm going to be here 10 days after the end of the year.
There we go, all right. All right, and so consent for that one?
Consent.
All right. Under HR, we have a disciplinary action recommendation that is, I think appropriately, everybody's comfortable with that?
Yes, sir.
Consent for that one?
Consent.
And then I want to, the rest of these are replacement positions, but I want to highlight one that I'm pretty excited about. And that is number six, which is the authorization to hire Temarius Miller as a student intern through the work-study program with the Starble Octavia Hall Consolidated School District for the Utilities Department. And I think that is a wonderful program and I'm really excited that we're looking at doing that and that Starble High School is participating with us in that. Because I think that's a real way for us to, you know, bring the kids along, give them good jobs, teach them skill sets that will last them for a lifetime. I mean, that's a, that's a good paying job. So anyway, I just think that's worth highlighting. So we get consent for those?
Consent.
All right, and I may bring that up again just to highlight it at the board meeting as, as we're dealing with this. All right, and then under code enforcement, we have three that have not yet been mowed. So out of, I think, 33, which was the start, the starting number. So I'm really pleased that we've gone that far. And they may yet be mowed by the time we get to our board meeting. But we still, as you know, leave them on the list just in case that there is not good follow-up. So can we put that one on consent?
Consent.
All right. And then last but not least, we have a sole source quote for 24 A4 meters in the amount of $6,000. And they are the meters that we are currently using for electric. So consent for that one? And then we will have potential litigation and property sale lease, which will obviously be in executive session. So we won't be, we won't be discussing that in this bill. So that takes us back to the budget, ladies and gentlemen. So we are, we are at a point now where we have gotten, I think, kind of worked our way through. And I put in front of everybody a sort of a list of things to look at that we had, we had talked about. And then I believe Alderman Sistrum put this one together that was, you know, where we, where we were essentially. And Mike, welcome, got one? So essentially, we were looking at a general fund deficit of, we'd gotten to about $761,000. And then we ended up getting the little surprise of the SkyWest grant, which they did back in Parker's term, Mayor Wiseman's term, yeah, 2015, and agreed to do $100,000 to support an additional grant for attracting a southern, southern, come on, man, a western route. And so we now have a western route via an American Airlines carrier commuter SkyWest. And so we are obligated up to $100,000 for that. We have paid $20,000.
Roughly $20,000.
From this budget, but the next year's budget will be approximately $80,000 remaining. And so I have no idea whether or not they would come back for anything. I don't know that there's another grant out there that would give an offset for something similar to this, but at the very least, we are obligated for that $80,000. And then we provided some additional estimated increase in parking revenue. So that puts you back at 821, which is 2.53 mils. And I had an email from Alderman Pokeup who asked me to read it to the board. And I didn't, I did not unfortunately print it out like I should have, but I'll, I'll locate it here as we go through this. And so in looking at the pay cuts, one of the things, or pay raises, one of the things that we have done in the past is we have delayed pay raises for three months or we've delayed them for six months. Alderman Sistrum has put on here a delay until January, which would be the three months. And that yields, you know, that's 0.3 mils. So, you know, you eliminate them, it's X, you delay them, it's Y. So those are things that are under consideration. And if you delay them half a year, then it would be something else, be what, half of that again. So as we look at these things, and we just need to see where, where we are, if we have some measure of an understanding. Obviously, there are no decisions made today, but an understanding of where we might end up. So, you know, from a raises standpoint, this is the raises, if I can refresh your memory, these are raises for the police, the fire, the engineering, and to raise the minimum wage so that the, the street department and sanitation department have a higher minimum wage than previously. So, and I don't, I don't have that in front of me either, unfortunately. It's not at the top of my, off the top of my head for what that minimum wage was going to be. Greg, do you remember, was it 17, 1750? Oh, right, it was 1750, so. So that would be the consideration. And I think everybody wants to pay our, our people. I know that there are some who would like to delay it 100% because it's not taking care of everybody. It's not increasing raises for everyone. I am not so inclined because I think we pay the job and that job changes year to year to year. And so from my perspective, when someone might not get a raise because that's, the value of their job is not changed, then I have no problem with that, but that's just a different philosophy. So I share that for, for that purpose. Do we have, Alderman, Alderman Bond, you are the single person I have not had an in-depth conversation with at this point. Do you have anything you'd like to share with us about raises at this time?
No, ma'am.
Okay. Anyone else have any thoughts they want to share from? I'm just going to go through the, through these topics from a, from a pay standpoint, a raise standpoint. Any, any thoughts? And go ahead. Let me hunt for Alderman.
Okay.
Go ahead. No, you go ahead and talk and I'll.
Okay. There, there are lots of reasons that it's important to pay our people. And, and one is retention. Another is recruitment when we have positions that we, we need to fill. Another is just making sure that we are the employer who is taking care of their people and paying market rates for, for their people. So, so those, those are good reasons. And those are all valid reasons to do a raise. And the raises that are built in here this year are minimal and impact mostly fire employees, as we've said over and over and over.
And these are 95% as opposed to the 100% that we've been trying to do here before.
And that's why it doesn't touch everybody because we're looking at just 95% of the market. The 390-something thousand that's, that's in, in the budget is.
396.
396. It just keeps us treading water and kind of where we are with the market. It allows police and fire to be, to be competitive when they have to replace positions. It allows other departments to be competitive when they replace positions. The other, the other reason, if you can't do it because it's the right thing to, to take care of your people, it's the right thing to be a good employer who offers a competitive pay package, is that we, if we don't raise, make pay raises this year, we will almost certainly have to do pay raises next year. And this number will grow from just under $400,000, 396,000, to probably $700,000 or $800,000. If, if we keep up a little bit, then next year we won't have to replace quite as much in next year's budget. And one of the things that I'm concerned about in next year's budget is that we already are going to have to, in our new revenues, new sales taxes, new assessed values, new whatever, we already have to replace $400,000 of one-time money that, that we have in this year that, that won't be in our revenues next year. So we're already in a $400,000 hole. If we don't do raises of some sort, then, then we have a bigger hole next year that we have to replace. And where that plays out in terms of impact on the city is it starts to reduce the amount that we have available to, to use for debt service for streets and drainage and things that we have bonded over the last, well, since '22 forward we've bonded. And we, and, and everybody sees it. You see the streets being improved around town. You see sidewalks being constructed. Everybody, everybody sees that. Cody gave us two spreadsheets. One is kind of what we would need if we continued on our current path with funding and, and doing the $3.5 billion of street improvements that we've been doing. And the other would be the, a minimal amount of funding. Cody didn't.
He didn't, he didn't. That's where I was.
I can't tell if somebody's got one or not.
Well, no, that's the reason I nodded.
So one, one is what it would be if we continued on the same route and, and how much we would be able to borrow. And that's heavily dependent on us, on us not carrying forward all the pay raises that will be following to us next year if we don't address it this year. Other is what that would look like if we had minimal funding. And, and the bottom line is there's grant measures that have to be funded. There, there are other things that that money is meant to. And, and what, what's available for streets becomes about a very minimal amount that would just be, allow them to do some scrub, scrubs, scrubbing and micro sealing. No milling and overlays, no, no major streets, no rebuilds in neighborhoods that have streets that are class two, that are failing, that sort of thing. So, so, so if you, if you can't support a pay increase because it is the right thing to do for our employees, there's, there's another reason to consider doing a pay increase.
Well, and I want to say, let me give you another reason to do this. Because if you remember, when we were not keeping up with others, we were losing employees. And so that's a, that is a costly endeavor to have to replace them because then you've got to go through the training and the search and your, your, you know, your complement of staff is lower. So it's just, it's one of those things where you, you lose in more ways than one, so.
And I would very much like to have trained, experienced police officers and firemen if and when I ever have to dial 911, then somebody who's been on the job for a month and a half and doesn't have any judgment or is stressed, or someone who's stressed because we have a lot of vacant positions that we're not filling. And so I, I just think it's important.
Okay, so I have, I have rounded up Alderman Pokeup's email. And so he said, he asked me if I would read this, so I'll read it. He says, "I would request that we move forward with the full 3.10 to 3.15 mil increase. The city taxes simply aren't the issue with overall taxes and we've been handcuffed too long by the hefty combined tax rate to include county and school. It's time we made necessary investments into our departments and put the pressure on the county to lower their millage rate, OCH debt falling off, influx of OCH sale cash could be a 7 mil swing, and support our departments more equitably. For specifics, this would include streetlights, 291, which we really don't have a choice about anyway, airport, 80,000, pay raises, 396,000, and the bulldozer, 125,000. The 7,000 a month water bill, I still feel be, can be created by parks and revenue that are currently being left on the table, tournament parking concessions, rental fees, sponsorships. I'd like Greg and his team to work this next fiscal year to show intentional generation of new revenue, which is the purpose of a four-propelled entity running our parks. By my total, that's 892,000. Another new expense is funded for 2025, 2026, at a total of 2.68 mils. I'd like to see the remaining 0.42 to 0.47 mils and 139,370 to 156,005 range, based on 310 to 315 total mils, to go to police first and foremost, to get up to adequate staffing and the remainder, if any, to fire. Please let me know if you have any questions." So I have read that verbatim. So that is where Alderman Pokeup is, is it relates to the millage increase and the things to spend it on. So just making sure everyone has full, full access to the opinions of those that we're, we're working with, so.
He said 3.1.
Yeah, it was 3.1 to 3.15.
1.15.
We, we did, yes. He was, yes. We are, we are at a point where it's three or, three or less, so.
Does anybody have any, anybody feel one way or another on the tax increases with that comment, with that segment from Alderman Pokeup? Before I go on?
I'm sorry?
I do, sir.
Can't support. Oh, I understand, I understand. So I'm, I'm assuming that that's a little stout for everybody?
Yeah.
Okay?
Yeah.
Okay. So you, you wanted to speak, go right ahead.
I don't know that I want to, but I am.
Well.
Okay. Talking about raising taxes is never easy. And if you look at what we've got in front of us, the things that we are looking at cutting or things that are all opposed to. And I don't mind sharing mine, this is just my opinion and everybody has their own. Absolutely opposed to listen, Karen, because you powered your presentation Monday at Rotary. I think everybody needs to see that. I'm not one that is impressed.
I'm going to make him make that presentation to us.
Very impressed, well, much, always. Gee, Texas, if I'm ever in a fire, I want your guys to come and get me. Good thing I don't wait to see one at Starble very often because I know it can't happen wherever I go. But I appreciate everything that y'all do over there. Parks, you'd have asked me six months ago for a cut park budget, I would have been okay with it. And I, that's just from an operational standpoint, but I cannot, just in the short time that you've been there and the improvements that you made in the very first budget meeting that we had, I asked you about three different things and you looked at me and laughed and you said, "That's funny because I dressed too for three yesterday." I appreciate what you're doing over there. We have to fund parks, that's the only way we can get anything back cost recovery. I have faith in what we've got at Parks right now and the community got in place. And I want to make sure that we fund that. Cut roads opposed to it. And the reason I say that is Cody and Chris and his team set the road preservation plan in place for a 10-year plan. The only way we see what that saves us. The only way we see what that saves us long-term because, and I'm, I appreciate what y'all done because that keeps us from being in this position year after year because you were saving us money. But the only way to see what that looks like long-term is to see that plan through. Sidewalks is something that I've noticed a lot recently on Facebook, people complaining about. What we spend in sidewalks over the last five years, seventy percent of that has been grant money. We have literally had to pay thirty percent. Would you say, Cody, roughly thirty percent? Um, that's a darn good investment on your money right there. And that's something that we'd have to invest in eventually anyway. So, we really don't spend a whole lot when it comes to sidewalks and what we get with the money we put towards it. So, I'm absolutely, I do not know where to cut there. I'm opposed to what Alderman Pocup's suggestion is because I'm not raising taxes just for the sake of raising them. And the difference that we're gonna get for what we are proposing and what he is proposing, that's not gonna do anything.
We can't do anything both for him anyway, so.
But even if we could, that's where I stand because we can't do anything with that. The one mil increase that I know several people are, are pushing towards, I don't know that I'm okay with that because at the end of the day, that won't even cover, cover the pay raises for our employees. So, there's no point, once again, in raising taxes just for the sake of raising them. And I think Ms. Sandra and I made that stand when we went to go raise water rates because there was no point in raising them just to raise them because we couldn't get to where we needed to be. And I'm never, I'm never gonna do that. That's just my, where I stand on it and I know everybody has their own opinion, but hopefully maybe somebody else will join the discussions if I jump out there.
Okay. Well, the, the pay raise, pay raise piece of this clearly is, is an issue and, and you have Alderman Pocup being supportive of pay raises for all those, all those reasons that I think Alderman Sistrunk articulated. So, anybody else wanna weigh in on pay raises at this point in time? Okay. Well, then let's, we can go to police. So, we've got cameras slated in there and, and I can tell you now that everything we can do to, to put the police on the strongest footing possible is where I want to be. So, from my perspective, the cameras, the body cameras, the cars, the, the increased personnel, all of those things I think are critical as we continue to have more and more people come into town, which we do, whether it was banana ball or it's, or it's gonna be an SEC football game, you know, people come into town and, and we've got to be prepared for it. And so, I think the chief has got, he's got his hands full and so I would like us to give him as much assistance as he thinks, he thinks he needs, which includes the cameras specifically, which I think the action board approved basically in, in concept. Two, two budgets to go or a budget to go. And so, this is a move, move forward for continuation of that. And we got more actually than we thought we were gonna get because they came in at a little lower price, so fortunately that was a good thing. The police cars, we're on the enterprise leasing program, which I think is keeping us in, in much better shape. We have vehicles that are spending more time in the shop than they're spending on the street, which is not good for any of us. And so, this allows us to have a newer fleet of equipment that can be on the street and serving, serving the community. So, I, I think none of those, none of those cost-saving measures I would support from a police standpoint and it sounds like Alderman Morland was saying the same thing. So, and I know Vice Mayor, you've always been very supportive of, of the police all along. Alderman Sistrunk, same. Alderman Morland, I mean, I don't think there's anybody out here that's not supportive of the, of the things that the chief is requesting. So, it's, it's a matter of are we prepared to pay for those things? So, we see where they are. Anyone wanna speak to the police items at this point? So, under parks, I think there's probably a little discussion there, a little difference of opinion there, but, you know, there are opportunities to additionally raise revenue, we hope. We're looking at that and the use of the parks is continuing to go up. So, hopefully that will, that will, in your, to our benefit. So, there may be some opportunity to have a slight revenue bump, but we've got an investment in our parks that absolutely requires us to maintain them because if you don't spend the kind of money we spent to make them as attractive and as welcoming and as strong part of our community as we did and then let them go to pot, we just don't do it. That doesn't make any sense at all. So, I think that the, the support for the parks is, is critical to our keeping up what we have invested in. Alderman Sistrunk.
And, and I would like to say that by thought that getting us down to two mills would, would get us a, a budget that was approved, I would be willing to take a look at cutting, cutting that parks budget a bit. We cannot fully cut it because there's about a hundred and fifty thousand dollars in there for increased utilities. That's gonna be J.L. King and the McKee splash pads. That's gonna be the fact that the current budget is grossly under, under budgeted for utilities. They actually probably exceeded their annual budget for utilities about July second. So, and they've got three more months that's, that, that they're having to make that up elsewhere in their budget. But if two mills would get us there, I would absolutely take a look at that and trust that probably. There are some things that could happen at the parks to, to increase revenues. It, it may take the appearance of charging for parking on tournament weekends. I don't think that's gonna generate hundreds of thousands of dollars, but it's gonna generate tens of thousands of dollars, which would help. The increasing registration fees, which is not gonna be popular, start, starting to charge for more for reserving a field, if you're reserving a field for your team, rep or travel team to practice. That's what happens when we ask them to raise their, to, to make a greater cost recovery. That, that gets spilled out to the end users of the park. So, but I'm, but I'm willing to talk about that if, if we're gonna go there. But in, in the increase, there's about a hundred and fifty thousand for utilities and then there's another hundred and fifty or so that's related to field maintenance and upgrades and bathroom maintenance and upgrades. And I think, I think anybody who's been to the parks or has talked, anybody who uses the parks have heard over and over and over how critical it is that bathrooms are clean and, and that our fields need to be in better, better shape. And that just takes time, people, money. So, so we can make those improvements, but not on their current, not on their current budget. So, I'm willing to talk about reducing the parks budget, but, but I think we can't cut it, cut it completely and we can't whack it in half, so.
Well, and, and I know, and I'm sure everyone else does, I know Alderman Vaughn spends a lot of time at the, at the parks that, you know, the bathroom situation is something that we've had to increase our level of maintenance or, or oversight from once, once a day to three times a day because the parks are being so well-used. And that's what we want. I mean, that's why we built them, but that does generate an additional cost associated with it. So, we gotta keep them up, make them nice and make them a place where people want to be.
And I'd like to refute the argument that we could use the one percent, two percent monies for, for that sort of thing because that one percent, two percent money for local private bills that encourage economic development and these parks that we've built, the upgrades at McKee, at J.L. King, at Cornerstone are all drawing people into town who might not have otherwise come here. So, it is an economic development function. The other piece of it is most of that money, except for about three hundred thousand dollars, is, is dedicated to debt service and other, other commitments that we're paying out of that, out of that fund. That three hundred thousand dollars this year was used to upgrade playground equipment. We're in the process of upgrading bathrooms and lighting and doing some painting at the pavilions at, at J.L. King. There's, there's three hundred thousand dollars worth of work that we can do every, every year in, in our parks, just, just in terms of replacing, refining, upgrading, that sort of thing. So, it's not a, it's not a source of ongoing maintenance. It's, it's an upgrade fund that's set aside and used for that and not an, not an upgrade, not a maintenance fund.
Okay. So, as, as we work our way down here, we've got, we're at two point five three mills as we have gone along here. And so, from a, from a pay raise standpoint, is there anybody who wants to just, oh, well, if we leave the pay raises as they are, then that would be something we would, we would come away with without making reductions. So, that would leave us at two point five three. If we're not going to touch the police, that still leaves us at two point five three. If we take a portion of the parks...
I, I'll, I'll say I would be willing to do point three five three mills at the parks.
Point three five, that's three digits past a point? I was gonna say, you wanna...
I'm, I'm trying to get us to an even zero.
Well, I understand, I understand.
Yeah, because I got another point one thought.
Okay. So, there's, so there'll be, there is some, is there some support for reducing the parks?
And I'm good if y'all are opposed to it because I don't think it's a good idea. I'm just saying...
I'm hunting for a place where I can get adequate nods so that when we present something on Tuesday night, we have something that people are relatively comfortable with and we know where we, where we may be. So, so there is some movement in parks. Alderman Morland, you had said no to parks?
Um, one, I'm gonna ask you.
A math question?
A math question?
Alderman Sistrunk told us we should have been paying attention to math class.
That's exactly right. That's exactly right. So, we're gonna get there at some point. All right. So, just, just as an FYI and, and in full disclosure, because Alderman Morland disclosed hers last time, so I pulled up my, I have several entities. And so, one of the discussions I think that was had at the public hearing that we had was rents are gonna go up associated with this. And so, I pulled up one of my spreadsheets for my taxes from last year and last year I paid a hundred and fifty-four thousand, two hundred and six dollars and seventy-three cents for approximately sixty buildings, which ends up being, I've got a number of duplexes, a number of fourplexes, probably at least a hundred and, a hundred and twenty apartments, let's just say. And so, my projected tax increase, you did a number for us.
Yes.
Where's your...
Under twenty-five hundred dollars.
Okay. So, twenty-five hundred dollars divided between, by a hundred and twenty apartments is not something that's gonna move the needle on me changing my rent. So, I, I say that to say I don't anticipate that what we do this time is going to have the kind of impact that the next appraisal will have, let's say, and that was, and that's next year. But the reality becomes the next appraisal is not going to allow us to increase our, our millage beyond ten percent of what it was this coming year. So, that still is not going to be a dramatic increase for any of us. It'll be noticeable probably, but not dramatic. So, I'd say that just to, to provide the information that I don't think that anybody can justifiably say, "Oh, I'm, I have to go up on rent." Oh my, oh my goodness, so.
And I'd like to say for those of us who can identify with having those kinds of tax bills, my house, my house is on the property rolls in, in the city of Starbuck. I live in Pleasant Acres, full disclosure, popular, much older neighborhood, very middle, middle of the road houses. My house is on the tax rolls at two hundred and forty-two thousand dollars. And I have done the arithmetic for what this will cost me, assuming that it's somewhere in that two, two and a half mills. I think I did two and a half mills when I was doing this, is, is less than fifty dollars, less than fifty dollars. If, if I, if my house, we worry about the poor. We worry about the poor and the impact on the poor. If, if they are in a house that is on the tax rolls that is, that is at a lesser value, then their number's gonna be much less than my fifty dollars. If they are older or disabled, and those are the ones that we, we really worry about, they also qualify for a special homestead exemption. And so, they're only gonna be taxed on the share of their tax roll value, which is nothing to do with market value, in my opinion, because I wouldn't sell you my house for two hundred and forty-two thousand dollars. But they're only gonna be taxed on the amount that's above seventy-five thousand dollars in true value. There are a lot of houses in this town that have less than seventy-five thousand dollars that are under occupied, that, that should not be impacted at all by this tax increase. The vast majority, no, that's not the case, but, but those people that we, all of us have a soft spot in our heart for those, those, those people. And I'm, I'm, I'm on a fixed income like those people and so I know what that means. But the truth of the matter is for most of us, I'm gonna say I'm kind of middle of the road here, most of us, it is less than fifty dollars a year. And for, for some people, it's gonna be nothing.
And I wanna, I wanna circle back to one of the topics that Alderman Morland brought up. We have worked, I mean, engineering department have worked really hard with our street civil, civil work or civil link. Is that right? Civil link, yeah, okay. There's, we've got so many civic plus and, anyway, for, for the civil link, that, that I think has been a dramatic improvement in our streets and our ability to address our streets. I have heard numerous times that people were really pleased with what we've done with the streets. I would, I would truly, truly hate to see us take a step back so that we are doing nothing to our streets for a year or two years because that just puts us back at square one. And, and we did a really good job when, when we got them to give us an evaluation, gives us something that we, that's concrete, that we can move forward or asphalt, that we can move forward with. So, I really, I really would hate for us to put ourselves in a position to do nothing for our streets next year. So, I just wanna touch that particular subject matter as well.
And then also touching on that, I know we put in for fifteen, what, fifteen million? Is that right?
Yes. But that was what I...
That does no good if we don't have the money to pay. We got so on the bond.
Right. Well, and that's the thing.
And I know we set that aside, but it's kind of pointless if we can't fund it. I mean, pay issues, you know, too.
Yeah. We've authorized, or we haven't got, the waiting period hadn't gone by yet. We've authorized, but certainly not in a position to issue anything for streets if, if we don't have enough funding to support the debt service, so. Okay. So, who do we need to hear from?
I'm gonna make you count one of them. Just, just, just so that everybody, and y'all probably all understand this and I'm just speaking up here. But the question, like, what this spreadsheet means is like to limit the parks' increase to the utilities' increase only would deduct point five, six from the proposed millage. But that, that is, the plan is, that's not to take it down to that. I mean, if that's...
Right.
If I'm explaining that correctly, Sandra, Sandra...
That's right.
But that's, it's not to eliminate the utilities' increase. And I say that about any of those, that's, each line is on its own.
Yes. Yes, that's correct. So, it's, that's why the ors are out there. This or this.
It's Chinese, maybe.
It is, it is. So. And there was a, a long Facebook tirade, you know, I said, actually, it was actually quite a, quite a good discussion on Facebook that Alderman Pocup initiated and I think it is, it's grown to a certain extent. You know, a lot of that out there is some misconception and an understanding that, you know, people think that the department heads, and I, and I, and I tell you now, y'all are, y'all are terrific. You really are. You work really hard to find savings. You work, you don't increase your budget unless you think you need it and it fits the profile of what we have asked you to do, which includes the streets and it includes the water and, and all the things that you do. So, I think people don't understand that somehow out there, we've got some sort of hidden slush fund going on where we're, we're pulling, our department heads are asking for something more and more and more every year and that's just not the case. That is just not the case. So, I'll be very loud and clear about that.
I feel there's very little equipment that's been asked for, we share very little. People are willing to patch what they have.
Sometimes to our own detriment because we will go until the wheels fall off. And, and I remember Vice Mayor, twenty, twenty years ago probably now, or fifteen years ago or so, I remember that discussion about driving something till the wheels fall off. And we essentially do that. Now, I, I don't necessarily think that's a great thing depending on what you're doing, like the police cars, I would never say that. But we've got, you know, we've got thirty-year-old bulldozers. We've got twenty-five-year-old pieces of equipment out there that are functioning, but they're also reaching the end of their life. And so, there comes a time when you've just got to get your equipment in a condition that you can continue to do the things that you're obligated to do and that you want to do to keep your city running. So, I say that to, to say they have not asked, the department heads have not asked for anything extraordinary and even when they do, we buy it used. You know, we go and we buy used piece of equipment as opposed to going for brand-new bells and whistles. So, I just think that we've been very prudent with our funding and the department heads have been good about that. Yes, ma'am?
Speaking on equipment, I would give Chris Black fifty thousand dollars for a bulldozer any day of the week because the money that he saves us by being able to operate it like he do. Appreciate that.
I do, what? He's, he's standing there.
I know, he's gonna tell me and he comes out...
No, no, I'm gonna, I'm gonna talk about something that he did today. So, Mr. Smiley sent me a picture of Mr. Black on top of the sanitation department fixing the roof because we had a leak. So, when I say that we have an extraordinary group of staff members, department heads, et cetera, it is that kind of pitching in to make it work for all of us. And so, the, and I've got the picture. He sent it to me. I love, this is great. I thought this is great. Chris is up there putting the screws in the in the metal roof and then putting the stuff around it to seal it, and hopefully that will keep the leak from going away. But, you know, that's the kind of people we have, y'all, special, special people in this community. And so it's just it's just makes my heart, warms my heart, and I don't have much of a heart, but it warms warms my guy.
I mean, you were talking about we just kept as long as we could. We've got a fire truck that's 25 years old that is still in a wonderful position, but we've taken it towards actual fleet because it is aged out. It's things like that that we're in a bind.
Yes, excuse me, while I put me back to myself.
And that's something that we haven't been progressing. It happens from the top.
Okay, so do we have a sense of the any of these others that are here, the bulldozers, the reduction to contingency, which?
I'd say to get us to an even two mills, I would take that down to.
Reduction to contingency?
0.15, not to 50,000. And and that's that's $50,000 for things that we have not funded before, and we've all seen.
Like a single.
I was going to say like a single, but ours, yeah. But in the last in the last two weeks, we've seen almost $300,000 in facility pole rentals, $100,000 in airport subsidy or airline subsidy. Something's going to come up. $50,000 is not going to touch it when it does, but it just it makes it a little easier to find. The 50,000.
So we still have not found a way to fund contingency?
No.
We've been trying to.
Okay.
Because we're trying to keep taxes.
Okay. Do I I need some I need some feedback from some asylum members here. Alderman Skinner, how about you?
No, I'm very supportive of police and fire, and I do not have a problem supporting them and making sure we keep a strong, safe community. That's kind of where I'm at. But some of this other stuff, I just I'm going to have to look through here. I just kind of hesitate on on some of those.
Right, so with with that.
So the police and fire, if we fund that, it's going to be over. I know that's where we land comfortably, just realistically speaking. Are you okay going over that if you had to for police and fire?
Well, no, now, at 2.53, that's funding all of that. That's not taking any of that out. So where 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 would those reductions go?
That way.
Yeah, yeah. So.
I'm saying this for the benefit of our new members, Alderman Skinner, Alderman Pocah, who's not with us, and to remind our older members who know this, you are not going to get anything to use for only raising millage, one mill opposed to two mills. And and the people who are going to chew on it the most are the people who are in the best position to actually absorb this and not have it impact their lifestyle too terribly much. And y'all know that, y'all know that. And and the other thing I want to say is there's nothing on here that we eliminated for this year that that expense goes away forever. There's nothing on here that we're eliminating forever. We're just delaying the inevitable, and and we'll be back next year having the same conversation. And I've told the mayor once, I've told her probably 7,000 times, this is the last time I think I can have this particular conversation. It just it is painful. It's painful. And we can either act this year and do what we need to do in order to fund this year appropriately, or we'll be right back here next year having this same conversation. To borrow the sewer, water sewer rate analogy, that our situation that Alderman Vaughn brought up, when we when we raised those rates nine months ago, we we raised them, she and I voted no on the rate increase because we said we're going to wind up right back here, six months, nine months a year, raising rates again. And what happened? We're back within nine months, we're raising sewer rates so we can fund a bond. So I'm telling you, there's nothing in here that goes away just because we refuse to raise taxes. It doesn't. You've delayed it to next year, and we'll have that next that conversation again next year, but but I don't know that I'll be able to have that conversation with y'all. I'll be Kyle Skinner sitting in court. So I support boys.
Granted, what Ms. Sager said, and you got to look at inflation. Inflation goes up every time, but we stay the same. And what is that going to cost us?
And for everybody who said we raise taxes all the time, we've raised taxes once in the last five years, once. And it was for grant match and body cam was for boys.
Alderman Brooks, you two are asylum member at this point in time, so I'm going to call you out if you're if you're willing to give us a sense of where you are on any of this.
Well, I got a problem with, obviously, Alderman Pocah, I've actually got a problem with those two mills. And I know we're going to be back at this next year, but we also been re-appraised. I would I would skin this thing and get it as, you know, to what we have to have because, yeah, we're going to be back next year, but I think we'll be doing re-appraise properties, increase values, therefore increase revenue. So I have all, you know, I I could delay these raises, you know, the police position, I want police and fire funded, but I mean, the three positions that are vacant are will they all, can we can we fund all of them, start with the new budget year? If one of those comes, we can say we'll hire them all.
There's two that are moving on the adopted senate law. There's two of the three are less good.
The parks, I would I would limit that increase to utilities, that's just me, you know, and then some of these other things down here, the bulldozers, the capital budget, contingency, get those what they got and the others that we can take away from them. And, you know, that's 1.53 mills a year, one mill. And I'm comfortable with one, I I said before, I supported the cameras and, you know, and argued against the business owner paying for the cameras and, you know, the camera where, you know, about that on there. But that's kind of where I'm at, there, I'm sorry, I can't I can't go along with this.
Okay, so when you say you can't go along with this, what you you're.
I've thrown out some ideas on how to get back down to something I was.
Okay, and so you you hold steady at one mill?
I'm.
Okay, well, that doesn't that does not put us, it does not give us all the things that we need from a police standpoint. Yes, ma'am?
Okay, so I'd like to I would like to say about the reassessment, everybody's concerned about the reassessment and and their property values showing up. I'm concerned about mine, too. But the the truth of the matter is that is tax year '26 that will be paid in fiscal year '27. Between now and fiscal '27, we're highly unlikely to have that SEC football championship that might drive might drive more money our way. But the hospital will be sold. The hospital will be sold. There's four mills of debt that the county pays that is related to hospital debt. So the hospital, the county could, if they do the right thing, reduce their millage by four mills off the off the top and not touch their operations because that is hospital debt service. Additionally, they're going to have some portion of $55 million that they can invest, invest if they're if they're the good financial stewards that we believe them to be, that they'll put it in a trust, they will invest that, and they will be able to use the investment income to help backfill their budgets. But that should throw off well in excess of $1 million a year, no matter if they only put 40 million in trust. That should throw off well in excess of $1 million a year, which would be two more mills. So the county is in the position, and since Alderman Carver says that they can keep their pizza the same size with the same toppings and.
That's the that's the thread for Facebook.
He says that they can hold the line. We should hold the line, they can hold the line. They should be able to reduce their millage next year, six mills, without without impacting their their budget. That that's going to take care of any reassessment issues that that you or your constituents are concerned about. And the other thing I'd like to say while I'm on the sub box here, the other thing I'd like to say is nobody likes paying taxes. Let's start at the federal level. Do we think we pay too much federal taxes? I doubt there's anybody out here that goes, no. I don't know what that money goes toward, and I think that's one of the reasons I think I pay too much. I have no idea what it's being spent on. You get down to the state level. I have a little better sense of where that money's going, but I still think that they probably could do some things to adjust the state state income. You get down to the county level, as we're getting closer and closer to home, I have a much better feel about what happens at the county and what I think they could do, and and I don't disagree with Alderman Carver that they probably could in the in the light of selling the hospital, reduce their millage by six mills. I know intimately what the city budget looks like, intimately, and and there is no way, no way that that we have the kind of fluff that people associate with taxes in in our budget. And and again, we are not we are not eliminating the parks expenses. We are not eliminating the need for capital funding. We are not eliminating the need for agenda software. We are not eliminating the need for pay raises. We are only delaying them, and all that reassessment money that we think we're going to get goes to those things.
Well, we're not going to get all of that reassessment money because we can't get more than 10%. So even if we got it, we can't use it because it would either have to be reduce the millage to put us there or else we it transitions to the next year and and goes into your how you calculate your next budget. So we are certainly limited in in our ability to take advantage of any appraisal to the tune of 10, 10%.
10%.
Yeah.
But I appreciate, I really, I mean, I think that's granted that y'all are trying to limit taxes. But there are other, it hurts in the long run, except in the long run, we look at ways, and it's not going to be within a year, two years, three years, maybe, other ways around But that's three years from now. What do we do in the next three years? There is a chance that eventually we can't cut taxes. There is that potential.
It's been done. Vice Mayor, you weren't around when that was done, right? I think I said it was in the 90s, but I think it must have been in the 80s, that they went from 19 down to 16 mills. You don't recall that, do you?
Your your figures and dates are close.
Yeah, I remember seeing it in the minutes and being rather startled by it's one thing to decrease at a mill, it went down three mills from 19 to 16, which I thought was quite amazing.
And it took them quite a while to get it back up to 19 mills, and they held it there for, I can't remember, 10 or 15 years, during which we weren't paving any streets, we weren't fixing any infrastructure, we weren't hiring new policemen, we weren't doing anything that we're trying to.
Well, we weren't growing, and now we are, and people want to be here.
And at the end of the day, I know people have been on Facebook saying that we need to do this and we need to do that, and don't, they are great suggestions, but we are limited to what we can do as a municipality as far as a lot of that goes. It is stuff that we don't have control over, and I know the mayor has been, I've bounced ideas off of her, and she's good, and she she thinks that some of them she's on board for going after, but it's one of those things that it takes time.
Well, it also takes the legislature to let us go after them, and that's questionable.
And I can, I've had so many people say that I was crazy for saying that we would lower taxes, but I can promise you, if we find another way to fund some of this, that is the open goal. But that is something that I can only control what I can do, but I can promise you I can work, like, all get out to find other options, and that is what I have been doing. That is what a lot of these people on the board have been doing. But right now, what do we do to balance the budget for the next two years until some of this stuff comes in place, or if it does?
Vice Mayor, anything you'd like to add to this? We've had heard from almost everybody.
I'm a yield today.
Okay, all right. Alderman Vaughn?
I'm listening with my heart.
Okay, well, you're going to have to tell us something with your mind at some point. All right, well, if I don't know that we've necessarily gotten anywhere, so we'll see if we can get somewhere. And you're welcome to contact me in some kind of way, and we'll see what we put together for a for a Tuesday night, but as it stands right now, the the consensus is going to have to be through some sort of promotion and vote, one way or the other, and if we don't get there, then we'll be looking at a special call. And I would certainly rather not do that because the 15th becomes, every day passes the 15th, becomes pressing. So I would would be happy to talk to somebody about it if y'all want to over the weekend, 24/7, always always available and willing to willing to see where we can get. So if there's need some help with that, if there is if there is nothing else, then hold on, no, I'm sorry. We will we will adjourn this particular work session, and I will see everyone and have a wonderful Labor Day.
See you tonight, most likely.
Yes, absolutely.